Okay, we'll open the school committee meeting for July 11th if we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do introduction of members.
Kerry Godditt, Blackstone.
Dan Keats, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Ted.
And Ted Novio, Millville.
Jason DeFalco Superintendent.
Thank you very much. And, so consent agenda A, we have warrants, minutes of meeting for June 23rd. Actually, we're gonna do the executive session. So it's warrants, minutes of meeting just for June 23rd, not the other piece listed here, which is executive session. So looking for a motion to approve consent agenda A minus the executive session minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Dan, second by Kerry. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And public forum? Do we have anyone here for public forum tonight? Thank you. And school committee items? We have our Unit C evaluation process. Do you wanna?
Sure.
Give us a little info on that?
Absolutely. So the committee may recall that in our last round of negotiations with our Unit C members, which was at this point, over a year ago, in the new contract, we had listed out the opportunity for the administration to sit down with a Unit C bargaining team of staff members to lay out a new evaluation process. We couldn't get the evaluation process actually completed by the end of negotiations, so we had a small group that consisted of Jill, PG, myself, Matt at the time, and Julie Wolford, Denise Hallard, who are the union president and vice president. And we put together what you have in front of you that is listed as draft. It's a kind of a page and a quarter that outlines the new process, but kind of the short version is that in the Unit C evaluation process, all of our Unit C members, and so just as a reminder, those are our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our administrative assistants, our food staff, kitchen staff, those individuals that really help keep the system running on schedule, if you will, and supporting our students. And so we put together a process where they will be developing some goals with their evaluator. In most cases, it's the principal. In some cases, it could be Scott, who is assisting with that. But in most cases, it's the principal. And they will be developing some goals based on the rubric that is, has already been approved by the school committee, that the Unit C members are evaluated using. And then after the goals are settled and agreed upon between administration and the Unit C staff member, there between September and on or about end of January, early February, the evaluator will have an opportunity to go in and observe our employee inaction and give some feedback on their work using that rubric. And then mid-year, so again, on or about end of January, early February, there is an opportunity for the evaluator, again, usually the principal, and the Unit C member to sit down and talk about the progress that's being made. Then from early February to the end of the year, there's an opportunity for another, at least, feedback session where there's an observation, some feedback given, and then an opportunity for there to be a final check-in in terms of the process that was made toward the goals from the employee that school year. And then a final evaluation will be written. Just to give a sense of where we've come from, right now, we have an end-of-the-year checklist. So at the end of the year, there's kind of a checkoff in terms of, you know, by the first full week in June, we have to give a kind of a checklist with a rating on it to the member, and that is it. So we've come quite a far way from that, where we want the evaluation process to be something that the employees really engaged in and working with the administrator on, to really help improve and strengthen, but also to be able to give really good feedback on the stuff that our staff members are doing really well. And so there was a vote from the Unit C bargaining team, and they did approve it today, so.
All right. So Unit C contract is approved, the unit has approved this evaluation, so it's really just a formality for us to approve it since it was approved through the contract negotiation. So I'm looking for a motion to approve Unit C evaluation process as drafted here.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Dan, and second by Kerry. Is there any questions for Jason about what's in the evaluation, or comments? Okay. So all those in favor of the Unit C evaluation as presented, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And next, under school committee is our contract for our financial service accountant, Ron Pierre Lewis, which is included in your packet.
Okay, just quickly, doing overview. So for some of you, you may have recalled seeing this before, when he first contracted with our school system in 2019, and he acts on behalf of the school committee as the assistant treasurer, and to help really, as you saw in an overview of the services provided, really provide the checks and balances on the work. And I know that he does a lot with you, Kerry, on that, too. And so essentially, the contract has just been updated. So one of the things that was really important, this is Ron's second contract with our school committee, that we hope to have approved, but you'll notice a couple of changes, particularly on page two, for those of you who have seen his first contract. We had to adjust the amounts a bit. His hourly rate was at 150, he's now at 170, and we had to adjust the not-to-exceed sum from 25,000 to 35. The only other piece that's different here is, and we bulleted it at the end of the second to last paragraph on page two, that says due to a transition in the district's administration. This is for any additional time that he will be doing with the school system as a result of us still being on the search for a assistant superintendent, our finance person, and the additional funds will come from the salary already allocated, because as you know, we're not paying that salary right now, so. And these are billable, this is billable time, this is not a guaranteed stipended amount that goes, it's up to not to exceed. So if there are weeks where, for instance, Ron's on vacation this week, I spoke to him this morning, he's in Mexico, so I only spoke to him for about 30 seconds, but, you know, there are weeks that he's not doing the work, he's not billing the hours, clearly. So that will look different for those of you that have seen this before. So I just wanted to call out those couple of changes in his contract.
Okay. Do you wanna ask your questions before we motion?
No.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract for our financial services with Ron Pierre Lewis.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Erin Z. And any questions or comments on the contract?
I have a question. So it says not to exceed 35,000, and you said that that will be taken out of that salary that we put aside that we're not using right now?
Oh, that's different. The amount that will be, the amount that will be taken out of the salary in the vacant position is the 17.
Okay.
The 35 is actually we put in the budget every year under school committee line.
Okay.
Yep.
That money that we potentially may take out of that salary, so if, when we find that right fit, will they, their salary be prorated for the time that they've started versus?
Yeah, so if we hired someone at X amount, but not until, say, September 1st, right, that amount, isn't that, the amount is not gonna be the full salary over the 10 months, it's gonna be the prorated over the 10 months.
Thank you.
And then it looks like there's just a small typo on the.
Almost where your fingers.
Last paragraph.
Okay.
If there's termination of services.
I'm looking for that, hang on. Where are you looking? Oh, I see. Yes, thank you.
What is that supposed to say?
Termination.
A notification of termination.
Okay.
Yeah, it seemed to have happened in the second paragraph, too. Info, I think it's the same. You see it here? Now that you brought it to my attention, it's popping out where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get that fixed.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the contract as written, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous.
If you wouldn't mind, Erin, would you sign that? And then I'll get the second page fixed with those couple of typos I have on, so actually I have a Word draft that I can do.
All right, and to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. Ted, nice to hear you. I just have a couple of items under my report this evening. In your packet, first up, we have the update on our assistant superintendent search. And so for those of you that are tuning in at home, I won't read what I have exactly in front of me, but just kind of the main points of the update. We've had 28 applicants for the assistant superintendent position to date. We had of the 28, eight screened by phone, and then two ended up being interviewed by the committee. Jill Pillegallarani is chairing the committee, she's sitting here. If there are any specific questions to, please do feel free to ask. And one of the candidates was moved forward, and for various reasons, just wasn't the right fit for our school system. Since, I've had conversations with the executive director of the Mas, the Mass Association of School Business Officials, MASBO, and also some chief financial officers in some surrounding school systems, to try to beat the drum and see what we can do to increase our candidate pool. We are hearing that it's a tough pool, it's always a tough pool, but it's a very tough pool right now, feeling various leadership positions at the district and school level have been a challenge this year. And so we know that it's getting late in the hiring season, and it's already, believe it or not, we are planning our launch to our school year, and I think we are going to need to shift our strategy at this point. And so through consultation with the executive director from MASBO, and I should mention, she also helped us find Matt, so she remembers our last search, and was instrumental in Matt's onboarding and finding him a coach, and courses, and the other things that he needed to do. So she was, I do trust very much her judgment in this. This is what she does all day, every day, frankly, so she's really a great person to plug into. Her recommendation, and then after meeting with Jill and meeting with the business office, they also agreed to this, thinking that it was the right way to go, would be to shift our focus and really just, for now, bring it into a focus on really finance, and look at just an interim business manager for this year. Again, that's a short-term plan that we would look to do for just this school year, and then launch a full assistant superintendent search, which is really the position we want to fill late winter, where we think we'll have a better chance at a fresh pool of candidates. We all know we started the search late, and it just happened to be when, you know, Matt had tendered his resignation, so there wasn't too much we could do about that timeline, although even with that, we still posted anticipated before we got his official resignation, just to try to get a jump start. And so with that, I am recommending that we shift, for this year only, to an interim business manager. And in your packets, there is a job description that really focuses much more specifically around finance, a little bit of the facilities work, although, you know, Scott and I and the interim business manager, if it is approved, will be meeting regularly. I think that's gonna be a really important piece, even with a temporary person, and just help keep the books where they need to be. You know, I think we're gonna have to have that direct, constant conversation, as we would anyways, but with that. So we're gonna look to move in that direction, and ask the committee, hopefully, to support that transition just for this one year, and start a search in the late winter, or beginning winter, rather, excuse me. And then, kind of running parallel to that, the school committee might recall, a few meetings ago, having approved a job description for a stipend opportunity for a lead coach. We were looking to really elevate one of our planning, teaching, and learning coaches within our school system, to help provide that additional support that we need across the district, to help coordinate our work with teaching, learning, data, assessment. And unfortunately, in conversations with our Unit A executive leadership, they have declined to come to the table to talk to us about that. They don't want to entertain a discussion around it. There was a lot of avenues we could go with that, and I think the, I think the best way to go would be then to just simply reorganize and do it different. And so also in your packet, you have a document that is titled Business Office and Instructional Support Services, it's a reorganization document, and it shows our current school year '22-23 design. It outlines the structures, positions, and budget costs, and then it outlines what we are proposing for school year '22-23, using those exact same dollars. And so if you take a look at the current design, you will see four planning, teaching, and learning coaches, and the total amount of 300,000, and the assistant superintendent, and the total amount of 140,000, and then you will see the proposed structure, which would be to have the three planning, teaching, and learning coaches have one lead coach, which is between 85,000, 95,000, and what that is, is the current salary with the additional 12,000 that the committee had approved for the stipend, and then the interim cost for a business manager ranging somewhere between 110,000 and 115,000. So the overall dollar amounts are the same, it's a neutral budget. I will say, right now, it's Jill and I, and we have, of course, Scott and our specialists, payroll and accounts payable in central office. We will very much welcome some additional support, particularly in the area of teaching and learning, frankly. I can tell you, I normally have all of our MCAS results done by hand, all of our preliminary groups and results calculated, I haven't even opened it yet. So there's just work that we just can't get to, and it's okay, it's not a complaint by any sense, it's just the reality of the situation we're in. You pivot and shift when you're in a transition, and that's what we're doing, and we're happy to do it. But for the long term, we are looking to make two moves. One would be to shift the assistant superintendent for next year to an interim business manager, and then to reduce one of the coaching positions to a lead coach. And I wanna underscore, the lead coach will not be an administrative role, that is not an administrative position. It is gonna be a 12-month lead for teaching and learning. And so we're looking for someone that is really more in that lead teacher capacity, that wants to step out of that comfort zone and help support the work across the system. But it will not be a Unit A position.
And the interim business manager, it's like up to full-time?
Mm-hmm.
That's typically a retired business manager, or?
Yeah.
Even assistant previous?
I'm glad you asked that, or mentioned that, because in conversations with our, the executive director from the Mass Association of School Business Officials, one of the suggestions was to try to get two bites of the apple with the candidate pool. So if we had just listed it as part-time, we may get, you know, kind of newer, greener, but with a lot of energy that wanna try it, that would see a part-time position and say, eh, forget it. I'm not gonna leave a permanent full-time position, or a full-time position for a interim part-time. So there may be an opportunity, by listing it as up to full-time, that we could get somebody, might be a little bit greener, but that, you know, maybe is an assistant business manager right now, that wants to kind of put their toe in that water, and be willing to take on an interim role. It would give them an opportunity, and more importantly, from our perspective, would get us an opportunity to see what we think about their work. But if that candidate pool does not shake out the way we're hoping, it would give us an opportunity for perhaps a retiree that could come in two or three days a week and really just work very closely with our payroll specialist, our accounts payable specialist, and Ron, our assistant treasurer, to make sure all the books stay very, very tight. So there's kind of two different strategies in trying to recruit different pools of candidates. Thank you for clarifying that, Erin.
Sure. And lead coach would be a single contract for that employee?
That's right.
But not administration?
Right.
Got a question. So the coaches formerly known as department heads, right?
This is a little bit different. This is a planning, teaching, and learning coach, so their job is to work with teachers at varying levels of skill, to help them analyze their data, to help them develop their lesson plans, they facilitate a lot of grade-level meetings. This year, at the high school, we were able to reinstitute content lead teachers that are like, our math specialists or English specialists, but the coach role is a little bit different.
Other school systems have similar?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so the role of the coach started in education, early 2000s, 2001, 2002. We started with this position in BMR in 2019.
So other school systems also have curriculum directors, which we don't.
Right.
And this is, this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this lead coach would support that a little more, the curriculum piece, and distributing that through the other coaches that would be in place?
Right. Yep.
Any other questions about the?
If memory serves me correctly, you started that with a grant, didn't you? Wasn't it a grant? Was it?
We had some grant dollars, we had some, you started the first coaching position by reorganizing positions.
I remember when you first presented it, yeah, it was.
Yeah, now it's local budget, but it's from reallocation of positions. Actually, one of the first coaching positions came from when we did the last reorganization of the JFK AFM complex, we eliminated.
Right.
An administrative role, we used that money for coaching.
Is the thought that this would be a one-year position?
I don't think so, because it's, because we are reallocating the four coaches we have, and it's not new money, and it's not new FTEs.
But you're taking money from the assistant superintendent's salary to make that a financially neutral position, so.
That's correct.
If the interim business manager is only a year, then it's not going to be a money-neutral thing the following year. If you get a new Matt for 140, then that's new money going to that.
We won't pay 140. In the budget, we had allocated, Matt was going into year five with us, so that's how his salary was to where it was. We had posted the position at 120 to 130.
And we had allocated that money to the stipend?
Yes, that's correct. The 12,000.
That Unit A wouldn't entertain?
Right. Yep. The likelihood of us finding someone that wants to make a lateral move, so in other words, they're in a assistant superintendent for finance and operations, and they're making 150 or 140, they've been doing it four or five years, and they just wanna come here and do it, is very slim.
Oh, right.
You know?
Right, right.
So that's why our assumption at this point is that, even though, you know, where Matt was at 140, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find someone at 130, frankly, I think it'll be less than that. It will be a newer, most likely newer candidate.
And going into interim business manager, opening a search, the prime time is December?
For the, yes.
I like the interim, for me, I like the interim business manager, I'm worried about the coach money for next, you know, if it's more than a year thing, so that's why.
But I'm just curious, if we found someone mid-year from that search, December, January, would we hire them before July 1? Would you take someone on next winter, or?
If that, no, if that opportunity presented itself, and, but I think what we would wanna do is look at some type of a hybrid opportunity, where if you have, if we have a newer business or assistant superintendent for finance and operations, I don't know that I'd want them to start full-fledged right in the thick of budget season.
Budget season.
So there would probably need to be some, a transition period where, if we have a good interim, that's a real seasoned individual could help and train. But that being said, if we end up with a newer interim business manager that we think is doing a great job, and we get through budget season reasonably unscathed, right, but in a good place, and we wanna appoint that individual late winter, I certainly could bring that forward to the committee, and we could do that sooner than later. That individual may wanna apply for that permanent position.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Do we, do you want to? So you have written here, looking for a motion to approve budget neutral reorg for the next school year, but we do have both of these listed.
Yeah, it separated them out for.
Well, it says action, oh, action required. So we will do them separately. Assistant superintendent's search update is listed as action required, and on Jason's request here, he's requesting to repost as an interim business manager posting, and remove the assistant search for now. So looking for a motion to approve the job description of the interim business manager, and let him post for, as written.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Erin Z. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any other questions or comments about the job description for the interim business manager? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. And then the second motion is to approve the reorg of the business office and instructional support services, but really what we're approving is the lead coach.
Non-union.
Contractual 12-month position.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kerry. Any further questions or discussion? Carrie?
Did we, that, is that the, so that will be the same description? Did we already get a description of the, we already approved the lead coach job?
Exactly.
Job?
Yeah.
It's just now going to be a non-union position versus a union position with a stipend?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the?
Then it goes to 12 months.
12 months.
Right, okay. Sorry.
All those in favor of the lead coach contractual position, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
And report of the business office?
Yes. In your packets, this evening, you have two very important documents. The first is titled General Fund Preliminary Projection, and then the second is a motion to close out FY '22. And so let me just take a minute, and I'll explain the general fund preliminary projection sheet, 'cause there's a couple of key points that I just want to bring to the surface. If you start at the top left-hand corner, that's titled E and D, you can see where our beginning balance of excess and deficiency is currently, or I should say, at the end of FY '22. We were at 550,001,06, and I know the committee recalls that in our FY '22 We were at $550,001,006, and I know the committee recalls that in our FY '23 planning and certification number, we had an additional revenue stream from E and D coming into the budget to help offset costs at a total of $150,000. So that brings our ending balance in excess and deficiency to 400, 401,006. So that's, that's an important number, because that's what we have in there right now. Then we shift down to our general fund income, and you can see what was budgeted for in FY '22, what the actual numbers were, and then the variance. Now, I want to bring to your attention transportation, charter school tuition, Medicaid, the CARES and the CARES Act, and then the DOR paid sick leave, and FEMA. I just want to reference those few pieces, so we have an overall sense of what those are. The state transportation number that was budgeted for FY '22, the charter school tuition number that was budgeted for FY '22, those numbers come straight to us in the budgeting process from the state. So those aren't, those aren't BMR numbers, those are numbers that are given to us. The actual, you can see that we have a variance in transportation and a variance in charter school tuition. The variance in transportation is an increase by $273,0144, and the variance in charter school tuition is an increase by $247,826. Those are numbers that are just given to us from the state, so we don't have any control over that, nor do we have any control over the forecasting of those numbers. It's just what comes in our cherry sheet when we get our numbers in January. So I share that because the increase in revenue was on the state end and, and happened to work in our favor from, for this fiscal year, which was great. I want to bring to your attention the Medicaid number. So the Medicaid number, if you remember at all of our monthly meetings, when Matt would review the revenue sheet with us, he had shared a few different, on a few different occasions, how our Medicaid numbers were coming in higher. It's because our team was doing the work of actually submitting those billable hours. So you can see where we forecasted $82,000, our FY '22 actual was $343,376, which is an increased variance in $261,376. So again, that's a shout-out to our team, that's our team just hustling and submitting all of those billable Medicaid hours. The CARES Act money, which also is a, is another blessing, was a little bit of a surprise. If you recall, most of this money was approved in December of '20, January of '21. And Dan, you might have made the motion to approve that, if I remember correctly. We did just receive the funding from both communities in May.
Really?
So.
Took that long?
So we got the, about, was around $30,000 from Millville and about $230 from Blackstone. So we're happy to have those additional resources. We get the checks, I think it was around May 19. The DOR paid leave, that is a big shout-out to our payroll specialist, that's Monique, and Karen Young, our lead nurse, really hustling to put together all of the staff members that, if you remember, President Biden had some COVID leave money that was available to schools. It was quite a cumbersome, not just schools, but municipalities, businesses. It was quite a cumbersome process, but we went through the, the process of tracking every single COVID day that people took, and we put in for that reimbursement and got the money back from Department of Revenue totaling $54,976. So that was sick time that people took, that we were able to charge back to DOR for a, for some relief funds. FEMA was the relief money, you might recall, we put in for everything we could, that was all COVID-related as well. So we submitted for every HEPA filter, for all the cleaner, everything that we needed to do to get the schools reopened, to keep the schools open, to hire the extra custodians, everything that we needed to, to do with that. We submitted every receipt. Josh is our buddy at FEMA and MEMA, and he worked very closely with us to make sure that we got every penny we could, and that was the revenue from that. So you can see, if you look down below at the total variance in revenue, $1,245,800. And then you can see, if you look at just below that line, the unexpended, unencumbered appropriation balances, $383,203. We had to close that gap. That is because, and just stay with me for a minute, if you look at the bottom table, the total general, general funds total, excuse me, you see that we have a variance in the negative of $444,031. You need to back out that $151,200 from the 4,000 series, that brings you to the $383,203. Can I explain that?
Yes.
Clear? Okay. Who needs a business manager?
You did all the math for us.
And so that's an important number, because in a moment, to close out our books, I'm going to ask the school committee to give administration the authorization to zero out those lines, as written on the motion closeout sheet, which will then leave us with a balance of approximately $800,000 in our general fund, and that will be added to what is an E and D when our E and D is recertified next January. So we are thinking we'll be around somewhere, somewhere around 1.2. So let me pause here.
Okay. So the motion to close out FY '22, does anyone have any questions about the general fund worksheet that he just walked through for us? Before we go into the motion? Yep. So I'm looking for a motion to close out the FY '22 budget year, which would move to allow administration to transfer out of additional revenues to the following amounts into each budget line. So $61,757 into the 1,000 series, $56,318 into the 2,000 series, $143,430 into 3,000 series, $100,672 into the 4,000 series, and $233,540 into the 9,000 series.
So moved.
Now, we'll zero out our, was that motion made by Dan?
Yes.
Second.
Erin?
Second.
Good.
So that cleans the slate, right, essentially?
Yep. Everything's balanced out.
Okay, so motion is made by Dan and second by Erin. Any other questions, Tammy?
So I just want to, I just want to kind of, so for, when you, when you talk about out-of-district tuition, our budgeting was off by $233,054?
No, no, the, so that's a good question. The budgeting wasn't off at all. What, so there is?
I mean, I could have picked any of those lines to ask this question, but that's the biggest.
No, what Ron was able to do, as we started to close out the fiscal year, was actually move around items and make sure they're being charged to the correct place. This particular line actually was a different issue, where we were able to move some money back into circuit breaker. There's a certain threshold that we have to spend, and so Ron was able to transfer some money back into circuit breaker, so that we would have that in circuit breaker if we needed it.
So we moved it from the out-of-district tuition line to cir-
Back into circuit breaker.
Into circuit breaker, and then that money can be used in the future where this?
We couldn't.
The general fund has to kind of stay, okay?
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Yep.
But in essence, I think, to generalize Tammy's question a little more, did we overspend these series by that amount?
Not necessarily.
Because he moved it.
Because Ron was able to move where things were charged in the budget. It ended up looking different than what we saw in our last tracking sheet. And one of the things I've spoke to Ron about is, when we, when you look at the August 11th meeting, at the first report out from fiscal '23, we are actually going to be using a budget sense-generated report. That is going to look almost exactly like that general fund income line, except it will have the expenses there, too. So when, when there is a move, you can actually see the move that's being made, instead of just seeing the sums like you're seeing here.
So now's the time to change that format, now that Matt is?
So you had mentioned that a couple of the line items, especially the transportation and the charter school tuition, are budgeted numbers from the state. Is there always going to be that gap, and is it like a certain percentage gap every year, or does it fluctuate because of gas prices and transportation and all that, or?
Yeah, so it all depends on what the legislator ends up doing with particularly the trans, the transportation reimbursement percent. So for next year, they're looking at having it at 85%, but it kind of, it can fluctuate and has fluctuated over the years, so it all depends upon what happens. And I do think a lot of it has to do with state revenues and what the legislator then recommends to the governor has done with those additional revenues. Right now, we are very flush with cash at the state level, so I wouldn't be surprised if there was, you know, at least over the next fiscal year, there's something additional there for support, but right now, it doesn't look like they've released any of those additional dollars for that. The latest update, I think, you, you get the Julie Kelly updates, she had sent down, and it looked like they were holding very firm at 85% reimbursement for transportation. I wish I had a better answer, Erin, sorry. It's like, it kind of depends on what they-
Well, no, I just, I wanted to make sure that people that are watching understood why the state budgeted number is so far off from our actual.
Right.
And what goes into that process of them bringing that budget number to us.
And this is not typical, this type of positive reimbursement at all.
Not since I've been here.
I was going to say, in my experience, it's just the opposite, actually.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for the motion on the floor? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? That's unanimous, thank you.
The next item is just the personnel changes for July 1st, 2022, and that's just to be received and placed on file.
How are we doing with hiring?
Yes, I have a full update. I can tell you, right now, we have one position at the complex, it's a reading specialist position. I actually reposted that myself this morning. We have two pair positions at MES, but I know Ms. PG and Ms. Schaefer are entertaining multiple candidates for those two. We have an SLP candidate who just accepted the position this morning, so MES is full, minus the, Millville Elementary is fully staff, minus the, the two pair positions that Jill and Christina are working with, and we have candidates for those. The middle school, we have a, we reposted the reading specialist position. We have four candidates for the ELA position that we just posted, and Ms. Kurt is working with finalists in the science and math specialist position. So she's going to let me know tomorrow if I will need to repost those. But right now, we have finalists for those vacancies. And then the high school, we may have one Spanish position still vacant. The secondary principals are working together on the interviews for that. We have a math interventionist that is vacant, and the, we have three pair positions that is now down to two, and Ms. PG is working with Ms. Fowler on those. So it sounds like the bulk of them are paraprofessional positions. Everything else is filled.
Okay. That's great.
And Jason's school spring has been updated to remove?
I did it myself, yes. I learned, I learned how to get in there and repost and change the headings and, yes.
There are a lot of anticipated positions listed, I was just asking if those were-
And you know what we ended up, what we ended up doing was, any, even, so we, we closed out all the old postings, but the postings that had new applicants in them, even if they were older, like custodians or special ed that had been posted in, in February, we left those open because they still had active candidates in them. So you might see a custodial posting from February, but there's three active resumes in there, so I don't want to close that position with the active resumes in it. And then we reposted the ones that the principals needed repost, it was only a couple. And then we, we took down all of the old anticipated ones that were filled.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Tammy, for bringing that to our attention, I appreciated that.
Not that I was job searching or anything, I just happened to be on there.
No, it's good, because I wouldn't, like, I wouldn't go in there, I wouldn't know that, you know, like, I, nor I am in there often, unless I'm posting positions, I wouldn't know what's in there.
Well, that's good, good to know.
Right, like, I wouldn't know, I'd have no idea what we had in there.
Neither one of you has. If I'm not mistaken, I think Tammy was posting jobs in another district on Facebook.
Exactly.
So that's where we are with our, with our vacancies.
Okay, thank you for that. And moving on to facilities.
Yes. Scott, if you want to join us and just give us a facilities update?
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
So the BMR High School, the asbestos removal began on July 5th. They started in the gymnasium corridor and sealed off the music room corridor. And when I stress again, there was no asbestos in the music room corridor, it was up above in the mechanical rooms in the auditorium. So that is projected to be done. The music room corridor is done, that passed the air quality test and was reopened today, just in time. And the rest of the work should finish by the end of the week with the air quality test and everything. That'll be done. At the middle school, Mega Alarm installed a total of 21 new cameras, so making our students and staff more safe. And brand paving is set to begin, removing the asphalt on, on or about August 8th, and they said it should take about a week to complete, weather permitting. Obviously, rain's going to delay it. And the JFK playgrounds, proven to be a little more challenging. So ProBilt came out, they did a survey, and they want to come back out with a machine, do some sampling, just to see how much concrete is there, and if it's ledge or concrete that they're looking at. So they're going to be back possibly this Wednesday to do a site survey again. In the meantime, I've spoken with Mr. Bebo, and he agrees that if there's any equipment that isn't safe, or would just cost more money than needed to just remove it, all he asked was just keep them updated. I told him I'd be happy to do that. The asbestos work at JFK AF Maloney is complete, that's all done. The custodians just need to install the ceiling tiles. And the Millville Elementary School, those playgrounds are actually in good shape, and all they're proposing is putting in more wood chips, possibly two days' worth of work. Jason and I walked the JFK AF Maloney playground, and we're in agreement that that seems to be the one that needs the most attention, as far as safety goes, with all the concrete sticking up. So we may, they wanted to start at Millville, but we're trying to push them towards starting at JFK first, in hopes that that'll get done before school starts. And sidewalks, they started working on those today, filling in the cracks, grinding them out, filling them in, and installing a new walkway.
And Scott, if I could just piggyback on that, two things, we have, Scott did find the information that was, I know it was requested at the last meeting, it was just the woodchip information around 88, so you've got some info on, yeah, it's just one page, just some information, if anybody's interested, and we thought we'd share that. And both town administrators are very much in the loop, they know what's going on regarding all of the facilities work. I started FY '24 budget discussions with both, and in my meetings, my one-on-one meetings with each, we had discussions around the facilities projects as well, so they're in the loop on that. There should be no surprises.
Also, the LED lighting began today at JFK AF Maloney also, the lighting project.
That's a parent, too, doing the work, did you know that?
What's that?
One of the, the individuals is one of our parents.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, which is great.
Yeah, good.
The MES playground, that work that we, I, I knew that it was just putting new woodchip down, but didn't you mention something about a- chip down, but didn't you mention something about a slide?
One slide has to be moved. They're still trying to figure out the cheaper fence, move the slide. More than likely, it's going to be the slide. They'll just have to dig it up, bore some new holes in the ground, and replace it. Questions? Any more questions?
Scott, the, we're done using the track equipment, so-
Okay.
We can make an appointment.
Yeah.
Schedule something. I can help you put it away, or I can get some students to help.
Are those hurdles being replaced, or we keeping those?
So...
Yes, we talked about that this, we talked about it today. Yeah, we're going to hang on to all that equipment until the new equipment comes in, because I think they, your, their group of students are still using it.
Yeah, so we're done, as of now.
Oh, okay, good, okay. So we can, we could do a surplus list for the committee then, so you all can see what's on there.
Instead of packing it up, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I hate to have you pack up stuff that you want to, need to get a dumpster.
The high jump pits, I think we should not get rid of that. Leave it inside so that the winter track team can use it inside.
The big mat that's at the end?
Yeah, the ones that we're replacing.
Right.
To keep them for indoor use. And they need to be vacuumed. They're very dusty. When you land in it, it just, a cloud of dust comes up.
Take the leaf blower to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can stick it underneath the stairwell, I think, is where they kept it.
I'll text you and, and...
Yeah, sounds good. We can meet and see what we should get rid of, because we're going to get a dumpster to clean out the storage containers anyway, so.
The new storage containers, have we figured out where they're going to go?
Not yet. We were just working on that, actually, this morning. We're not sure exactly where they're going to go. We're working with Home Depot on which ones and whether they're going to come assembled and delivered, and we have a lot of kind of details to work out with that.
Yeah.
But not quite yet. But everything's been ordered. The only thing we haven't been able to order are Discus. Just FYI, there's a shortage on Discus right now. We've tried like four different vendors, and we can't seem to get them. But everything else, everything else is, has been ordered for band equipment and the track equipment, and everything else that was approved, obviously, is on the update. So we're, we're almost there with the orders, just the Discus is, I don't know why that's hard, why they're hard to get right now.
So a bit of good news on the girls' softball field. I had Michael Allen, the head custodian at JFK AF Maloney, quote out what the cement would cost to PAU. Doing it ourselves, digging it out, setting the forms up. And Ronnie Brothers offered to donate the cement.
Oh, nice. Great news.
Awesome. Great news.
It's just a matter of getting them down here. We're going to work at their convenience now, but it'll be done before school starts, definitely.
Great.
Do you need to dig that out by hand?
I got a backhoe I can take down there and do it that way. The only, I got to take the fencing down, but-
I got a little mini excavator if you want.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. We'll coordinate it. I'll dig it up in the weekend.
Yeah, great. Because I used my backhoe to take down the backstop, and I ended up, you know, making more work than it was worth. You put down the outriggers, and it digs down, makes holes, and so, yeah, that'd be awesome.
It's coming up in the weekend.
You ready for this weekend?
No. That's so. I'll get you. If I don't have your number, I'll get it.
Yeah, we'll start it at least Saturday morning.
Yeah.
I'll get the fencing down in the meantime, so we won't have to do that. That'll be awesome.
This is the high school softball field, the girls'.
Correct.
Yeah. I think I dug a trench that, there's electricity going down there for Chris McNamara a few years ago.
Yep, for the well pump.
Yeah.
Okay. Shared. Awesome.
Just a quick question, because we're talking about that field, and I know our new athletic director is probably just getting in and situated, but the intention of the outfield of the baseball field, soccer field this coming spring, do we know? Is there soccer on the soccer field, or, I, I don't know if you know the answer.
Are you asking if there's a...
Will our soccer teams be playing at BMR?
Yes, on our fields, yes.
Yeah, Jason and I discussed that. Football will not be practicing on the soccer field. And I've spoken to Josh Uglow also.
But that wasn't why they were practi, they were moved because of that, the field?
Yeah, I guess the grass wasn't...
The status of the field?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been fertilizing it and watering it.
Right.
It's looking better.
For a very long time.
Yeah.
So our teams will be playing at their home fields this year?
Yes, that is the expectations.
Yep.
And the hope is always that they get to use the top field as well once in a while, but...
Soccer, field hockey, and football rotate on the, the top field.
Yep.
We changed that two years ago, whenever it was.
I, I just have one question on the Millville Elementary update. Was the, is the plat, you know, the door platform thing, what is that considered? You know, where the door doesn't, just has a...
From the auditorium?
The new walk path.
Sure, the landing, yeah. Is that part of either of these, or is that a separate item?
Yeah, that's a new walkway.
We were just there.
Oh, that's part of the sidewalk work?
Yeah, they're going to connect the middle door. We were just looking at it today. Scott and I were over there, and you can explain this better than I can, but the middle door, there's no stairs, so we can't connect that, but the two outside platforms, we're going to connect.
So if you're facing the building, door number one is the top of the auditorium. That's the one that makes the most sense. Put the walkway two. Door number three, door number two, sorry, has stairs, because it's the lower part of the auditorium. So it's like three stairs you would have to go up to get outside that door. It's not ADA compliant to begin with, so it makes no sense to put concrete there. And door number three is the back of the stage. At this point, we just feel it's not worth putting a walkway there.
Okay. But the, the, the platform that goes nowhere, that's going to-
Yeah.
-be ADA compliant. Okay. But that's part of the sidewalk?
Correct.
When you say that. Okay. I didn't realize it was the same.
It's going to connect to the main side, main entrance?
Yeah, it's going to connect to the main entrance.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
But there are two other platforms that are just going to be platforms.
They're still platforms.
But you're saying one is, one has stairs on the side, so it wouldn't make sense to put a wheelchair?
Going down.
Right. So there's, yeah.
So we looked at door number three, because that's where the stage is, and if we had to, we could put a, a walkway from door number three to the driveway.
No, no, we have walkways to each door.
What's that?
A walkway to each door, concrete?
You can, but it's the expense.
I think the reason it was left the way it is, is because of all the ledge out there.
It doesn't look right, or I don't...
Yeah, so there's a lot of ledge-
Yeah.
-in between the curb and the building. The platforms were probably put in place just to be able to step off, but it was probably compliant at the time.
Right.
Those are all emergency exits.
Right.
Okay, so it's not necessary.
Well, in the event of an emergency at MES in that auditorium, I would think that the main doors to go out would be the ones at the top of the auditorium, which is where they're putting the wheelchair.
Correct.
That will connect the platform to the side.
Sidewalk?
Yep.
Yeah.
And I spoke with Christina this morning, and she agreed that the other two doors never really get used.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Scott.
And I think you're going to need more than one dumpster for the storage units and the...
Yeah, we're going to get one for Millville, one for the high school.
Big ones. No, I'm just saying, like, there's a lot of track stuff.
So in the 40-foot container that's at BMR, there are some, the special ed equipment being stored in there as well for students that, you know, we don't have any use for it right now, because we don't have those students. And I spoke with Tara, and she, we're going to store them here at the middle school.
Well, we're keeping the equipment. I know Jill's going to look at it with you, Scott.
That specialty.
Yeah, we may have students in the pipeline that are going to need that equipment. Yeah.
And we're even going to look at some of the desks, because now that we moved second grade out of JFK, we've got a little more storage room, so hate to throw everything away and then, you know, five years from now, say, oh, God.
We need another classroom.
Don't want to do that, right.
But fine storage for what is good.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
I've got one question. So the, the track equipment that we are replacing, would we consider donating it to, there's a, like, in Providence, the Cobras, there's a track club, there's a few track clubs out there, to just reach out and see if they might be interested in, or do you think it's just, let's get rid of it. If we're not using it, let's not?
So when we surplus something, we can, when that does come to us in the form of a list, like, I think we had last meeting, we had a few pages of surplus, we can decide to try to do that.
Yeah.
Certainly.
I think it's awesome.
Yeah.
If there's a, yeah, if there's a group that needs it.
And many times, we have sent books to other countries and such. So that, if you want to start looking now, because I assume that list will come to us at our next meeting in August.
Yep.
That way, we would be able to incorporate it into our motion.
Okay. I'll reach out.
Thank you.
Have kids that can use it, use it, rather than throw up the trash. Yeah.
And then the only other item is a facilities use request, which we get often, from the Blackstone Millville Youth Basketball Association. They're looking to start tomorrow. This was just the next meeting that, that we could get this into. And the dates have been put on the schedule, checked, verified, and confirmed.
So the high, the gym is still closed for asbestos, so I think, isn't that why?
Yeah, we decided to move that to the hot area.
Yep.
I think there's a sign out there for the floor being done, though. Is it done?
It was done the last meeting.
So this is for the middle school instead?
Yep.
The varsity boys' head coach is going to be running the clinic.
This clinic?
Yep.
Do they have a, the summer camp this year?
That's in August.
Okay. Good. All right. So this is for use of the middle school gymnasium, starting tomorrow. Tuesday and Thursdays for the next, for the month of July is what it looks like. And we'll just keep them here for that whole time, not going to that as well. All right? All those in favor of approving the BMYBL facilities request? I'm sorry, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Chuck. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Carrie. All those in favor of...
Sorry, I just have a question. Because now it says Jill's signature, but it's at the middle school. Does that matter?
No.
Okay.
We'll have Tanya sign it. It's okay.
Okay. I mean, it's just, I just want to make sure Tanya is aware, but you said it's on all the, whatever we need it to be on.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the facilities request? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you. That's unanimous.
And that is it for me. Oh, do you want me to, yeah, sure. We did get some good news, not related to facilities, but some good news around our summer feeding, that we are going to be able to feed our students that are in school in all of our programs, universal. So we'll have free breakfast and lunch, which is really nice. We also will be able to feed at the Boys and Girls Club again. And then we just learned this afternoon that we can do community feeding again. Yeah, we just found that out. So we are setting up a schedule.
For the summer?
Yeah, just for the summer, and we'll be setting up a schedule and getting that information out to families.
Wow. It's been a while since we've done that.
Yeah. So it'll be, it'll be nice that we will be able to put those two pieces in place. So we'll be feeding over 400 kids a day, plus the, the community feeding.
Are we hopeful at all that that will extend into the school year for...
We hope so, yeah. We're still waiting, like everybody, but we certainly hope so.
All right. Good news. Thank you very much. And on to school committee forum. Does anyone have any, anything to share or request today? It's summer, so... All right. With that being said, we will actually move into executive session, not to return. We will close out our meeting. So let me just say, our next meeting, we have a workshop next Thursday at 6:00 PM here at the middle school. I think we all match our calendars, so we are, all have that updated already. But we did add an executive session to start at 5:15 that evening, prior to the workshop, just because Jason will be joining us for the workshop, and he'll be able to head out after that. And then our next school committee meeting is August 11th at 6:00 PM here. And without any other committee updates or forums, I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session, not to return to an open session. And I'll take that.
Second.
Motion made by Tammy and second by Dan, and that will be a roll, roll call. Erin?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Erin, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie?
Ted.
Ted.
Oh, Ted.
And Ted, we're moving into executive session. Roll call, vote. Is it yes?
Yes.
I'm going to carry you in there.
Okay, sounds great.
All right. And Ted, did you have any, you didn't have anything you wanted for the committee forum?
I did not. No, I did not, I did not have anything. Thank you.